All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Keen?
Here.
Commissioner Patti?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Black? Vice Chair Young?
Here.
And Chair Lagnus?
Present. We have a quorum. We'll move on. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask if you're able to join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Next on the list is approving the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries. The first item we have is approving the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 25th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 25th as written.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, corrections, or adjustments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries.
Obstain.
I'm sorry. One abstention? Did you get that, Karen?
Who said it? Okay.
The next item is the Common Bond Concept Review, O.L.T.A., Headwaters Village 2, second edition. And so for those in the audience, the process that we usually take here is staff will give a report on the project and what they see fit to share with us verbally. And then the commissioners can ask them questions. And then we'll bring the developer up or whomever it is in your group that wishes, we'll ask questions. Typically, although it's not required here, typically we'll take any public feedback that is desired. And then we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission to give complete feedback. Tonight's particular piece, as noted on page one of the staff report, says this is a concept plan review. The Planning Commission provides general non-binding feedback and no formal decision is made. So this is not an item where we need to vote on anything. Donovan, do you want to kick us off?
Yes, sir. Chair members of the Planning Commission would like to present the concept review of the Headwaters Boulevard Apartments. And it's located with, as you can imagine, in the Headwaters Development Area, within the Headwaters PUD. It's at, access would be, will be, is planned to be on the, you know, yet to be built by the developer, Headwaters Boulevard, which is this kind of pale area. And this is, of course, within the Headwaters area, just south of the Hardwood Creek Service Center and the Transit Center, and directly adjacent to the current site of the veterinary building. And also, a bank building, which soon will be occupied by Bell Bank, I'm glad to say, after about four years of vacancy. The submitted site plan, which I'd like to start off with, is for a 53-unit apartment building. Also, I'd like to maybe have two separate conversations here and focus first on the site plan itself for this, you know, general non-binding feedback to provide for the benefit of the architect, Nick Coniff? Coniff, yes. And the owner, Len Pratt, and the owner's representative, Richard Palmer. And Mr. Logan here, who's supporting the architectural staff. And, but then also then talk about the context, since multiple families not currently are permitted to use within this Headwaters PUD area. So back to the site plan. So basically, they've fronted the building, oriented the building on the Headwaters Boulevard with two access points. There is no underground parking proposed. The applicant plans to request flexibility on parking standards that the zone code allows, and provides something in the range of 96 off-street parking spaces for a ratio of about 1.8 parking spaces per unit. It is a mixture of one and two-bedroom units. And I guess with some three-bedroom as well?
Yep.
And with a general area identified for stormwater management facilities, the, you know, and landscaping, and, you know, landscaping is also part of that Headwaters PUD. There's a note here, just to answer that question, there's a potential land sale listed here, and potentially that's, the Vet may expand and purchase that property. And also, you'll note here that there is a dog park, you know, listed. This is, would be, you know, subject, of course, to the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission, a recommendation and review. But is, I think is seen as some part to satisfy the parking dedication fee, is provide that public amenity. And that's going to be on next Tuesday night's Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission agenda to discuss just that. Also, this property is within the airport overlay district, and which being Zone C means that it can't go above a height of 145 feet. It's a four-story building, and, you know, I think it's safe to say that it won't pierce that forbidden space above 1,075 feet above sea level. Then also, the fire chief did review this plan, and he had a couple comments. One related to the actual having a correct location to have an aerial truck be able to reach to the upper stories during emergency situation. And so, he requires actually this common short setback along the whole part of the driveway, which would, of course, would require the relocation of that tot lot on that kind of, you know, on that corner of the building. And also, on that corner of the building, a fire hydrant, as well as a fire hydrant on this, on this corner here, which is roughly the southwest corner. Also, there needs to be adequate turning radius for the large truck to do the two, the Bronto truck to do this. And so that we provide the applicant with that, with the, you know, that turning radius for further modification of the parking lot. Also, Ryan Goodman, the city engineer, had comments that involved extension of a sidewalk, screen between the parking and Headwaters Parkway, dumpster location, and also just the acknowledgement that the, you know, Headwaters Boulevard needs to be built by the developer. At this point, and this is again just the concept, and this does not include, you know, much detail as far as stormwater management, or the minimum design standards, lighting regulations, landscaping, signage. And of course, watershed review has not been conducted. But at this point, I'd like to take a break and, you know, inquire with the Planning Commission if, for the general feedback that they would like to provide.
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I read over the, you know, the fire chief's statement, and, you know, I agree, you know, you have to have turning radius. It's a hundred, excuse me, it's a hundred-foot articulating ladder truck. It needs room to move, especially around those corners. The tot lot, I don't know, did they already come back with any type of proposal for changing that, moving that somewhere? So that was my question about that, when they come up to talk. The tot relocation, and why is that tot lot even questionable when, if they can park on the north end of that driveway coming in, or they can park on the street and reach it, you're only talking a few more feet for that, you know, where the tot lot is. So unless they have another location for that, like on the north side, and then maybe extend, move that driveway a little further north, you know, I don't know. We'll wait till that comes up. But those were my questions. Otherwise, everything else, the fire hydrant relocation, or the additions of them, that's pretty standard. Thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? Mr. Keen?
Couple things. This is not near a grocery store. It's not near school. It's not near services. It is relatively near the Transit Center. I am questioning the flexibility on the parking. I grant that in cities that you have common bond projects, that have buses and taxis and lots of Uber and things, that that might make sense. Forest Lake does not now, nor within the next 15 to 20 years, according to our comp plan, have any kind of transit, so that folks could get to and from. So one to two cars, what I expect, especially for a three-bedroom apartment, two-bedroom apartment, be the norm. I would also expect that folks would like to have the occasional visitor, who will get there in a vehicle. I'm sorry. It just, it is, it is what we, what we have here. So I am concerned about the parking. Already, the veterinary clinic, their staff parks on that road, because if they have clients, there's no room for the clients to park if the staff parks in the parking lot. So already, that road has cars parked on it. And I really do not want to encourage any more parking in, on the roads in this area. I love the fact that you're proposing some two- and three-bedroom apartments. We have a serious recently-built glut of one-bedroom and studio. And we do not have affordable things for, for two and three for families. And so I absolutely love that piece of this. Who are you thinking would maintain the dog park? You know, like any other amenity, the building is sweet, but the devil's in the maintenance and operation. So that will be a significant question for me. And when you do plan your dumpsters, please remember that you need dumpster and recycling. And in a move-in, move-out, you're also going to have to screen bulky items: mattresses, refrigerators, big screen TVs, you know, all that stuff needs to be, your enclosure needs to be sized for that material. And I guess I will also have some conversations later when we talk about this particular location. But those would be my comments on the proposal as is.
Are there other comments for staff or questions? Mr. Keen?
You know, and on her, just to kind of tag along on that comment, I did have an idea on a different driveway on that north side. And that would also accommodate the fire truck if that came in straight from the north off Fitzgerald, straight down. And then on the south end, you've got those three shrubs and knockouts. You know, the very southern one, that's right in the middle there, if you move that over, you can put your big enclosure there. The trash truck could come straight in, pick everything up, pick everything up. And that'd also have enough room then for that fire truck to either come in from that side or exit that side. So I was just waiting for them to come up and talk. But since she mentioned that, I just tagged along on that. Thank you.
We can have questions with the developer, too. Are there other questions of staff? I have one, Donovan. It's, for other commissioners to follow, it's page 12, the last bullet point on there that talks about the masonry requirements. And the developer is, at least at this point, looking at a facade that would be 25% rather than the 50% masonry standard we have for this type of facility. Can you tell me, I'm most interested in two things. Would this be setting a precedent where we would be then essentially required to make that same consideration for others? And does staff have an opinion if this is fitting for this area, particularly with the considerable investment that the city has in that, that region with the Parkway and all of the other infrastructure, not to mention immediately across the street is a lot of development talks long-term that the city has interest in?
Yeah, regarding the minimum design standards for multiple family, it really does seem like, you know, we've been following, or you're more deferring to, you know, current development standards, where if you look at, you know, the Lighthouse Lofts, look at, you know, Timber Ridge, look at the Gateway Greens, they, those apartment buildings, you know, follow more of a contemporary style, where masonry is not, you know, not really present, or is not focused upon. And I think some of that requirement is for the material, but also it's just to create the architectural interest. And there are many different ways you can create the architectural interest, through, you know, through scaling of the massing, through vertical and horizontal elements, you know, designing the windows and that sort of thing. And so, you know, that's, I don't think it's setting a precedent to allow some of the, I think I'd be supportive of that sort of flexibility. The, you know, part of this, and this is kind of getting into the context of this, of the, you know, within the land use, you know, is, right now, there's, you know, there's, you know, within the Headwaters PUD, there are standards for, for multiple family. There's senior housing, special needs housing, that's part of the original, you know, original PUD booklet. And there would need to be a PUD change. And this is, you know, you know, because since, it would be changed both for, you know, what type of use here. This is the original Headwaters Village, you know, building elevations. So what you see here is basically, you know, single-story retail office space. And, you know, that was, that was, that was what was conceived of, you know, in this, yeah, what's going on here? I'm just trying to show the...
I remember it well.
The map. So basically, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's parking lots, it's parking lots, and, you know, basically, you know, what you could refer to is, you know, your contemporary retail center. Apologize for this. And I am not going to really get that back. So, well, let's do it this way. Let me see if I can get that back. And so, so part of this, you know, was changed, this is basically where the Vet is located now. And this is the future, you know, Headwaters Boulevard, and the, you know, the apartments proposed basically in this area. So, you know, formerly, this was a site of, you know, parking and the retail there. You know, and this is where the, you know, the current bank is on that corner. So, you know, as part of that PUD amendment, you know, the applicant, you know, Common Bond, could also propose to have, you know, to alter the, you know, to offer new renderings for apartments within the area, or to add to the, to the senior housing, special needs housing, you know, concept drawings in the PUD booklet. So that's not so much my concern. And regarding like the, the city investment, you know, the Headwaters Parkway, which is envisioned to be, you know, basically, you know, have 15,000 cars, you know, per day, you know, at maximum buildout, you know, that, I believe that is a good location for, you know, high-density residential, you know, understanding that people, you know, it's going to be, you know, it's going to generate, you know, residential apartment building will generate the traffic that will, will use Headwaters Parkway or use Highway 61.
Is the, is the underground infrastructure in that development, obviously, it was built out for commercial, or it was designed for commercial use in there. Is that sufficient to support this and all other feasible things that could come along in the still vacant properties?
I, it wasn't raised, you know, as, you know, Ryan didn't raise that as a concern. And basically, we're pretty close to the Metropolitan Council interceptor. So what's, you know, in the, as far as like the sanitary sewer capacity, which is an issue in some other places in the city, is not, is not an issue here. As well as, you know, there is envisioned a third water tower. And actually, it would probably be, you know, some, in somewhere in this quadrant of the city. So also, that would, that would help serve this property.
The last question I have for staff is, when I look at the 2040 comp plan, and I don't know that you'll be able to pull this up easily, but on page 61, where it starts and it talks about parks and trails, it has a map on there. And it shows all of the future parks in, or at least in the broad areas on that map. And I know our park board and staff have spent a lot of time putting that together over the last, what, two years to come up with that. And we don't have a park planned for this section of the city, because there is significant parkland already within walking distance of here, probably more parkland than the vast majority of the city, in fact. So does staff have an opinion if that priority should be changed?
Well, the parks plan, in the 2040 comp plan, does identify future neighborhood parks. This is really kind of under, under the threshold of that level. And this is pretty much a specialized, a special-use park. And, I mean, right now, it's, you know, obviously going to be, you know, consideration of the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission if they like it. And as far as, you know, who's maintaining it, will be publicly dedicated, and that, those are all things to be determined. And so I guess I really, I mean, I shouldn't make guesses on how, what the discussion will be like on next Tuesday night, but, you know, you're welcome to come. Meeting starts at 5:00 p.m.
I'll do my best to come there. Are there other questions of staff? Mr. Keen?
The dog park, is there a special parking area for them? Or are they parking in the apartment complex? Because like, I work in Stillwater, we have a dog park, and there's probably an average of four to five cars there at any given time. So that's an additional, if they're parking in this apartment place, or are they parking on the street? And then there's got to be trash for that, and water, and other, other things to consider. But I'm mainly looking at the parking.
Yeah.
Since it's kind of tied in with the apartment complex.
Right, right. I understand the concern. There's, there's a bump out here that was designed as part of the original street construction, that could serve as parking for that. But it would be, you know, it's a public park. So it could be people who, you know, live here, use it. There could be people who come, you know, bring their dog to here. And it's really, it's a pretty preliminary conversation around...
Right. And that's what, that's why I'm talking about it, because I see it every day. It's, it's, it's a dog park. So if people are driving their dogs there, which I see every day, they're going to need parking. And if the apartment complex only has X amount of parking spots for a 53-unit, and you're talking a couple cars plus visitors a day, where are the people going to park for this dog park? And that's, I see five there, pretty much on an average, all day long.
Yeah.
So sometimes there's more, sometimes there's less.
Right. And the bump out is already used.
What?
The bump out is already used for parking.
Yeah.
Also, Mr. Keen, I wanted to mention, actually, you know, you talked about access from Fitzgerald to the north?
Yeah.
With the idea of fire truck act, you know, and dump, you know...
I see that with the bump out and all that, yeah.
We'd actually, you know, that was an initial proposal, you know, that Common Bond had brought forward. And so, we had told them no, that actually, the kind of, how, the difficulty with creating, you know, with snow removal, or, you know, that this was kind of the dedicated, could be dedicated like retail parking. And so we actually encouraged them to go around. So you're actually saying something?
Okay. Well, I was just throwing that out there, because...
I mean, not to, not to, I don't mean to shoot you down, just that that's...
No, but they could...
That has been considered.
But if they, if they did consider coming in from the north, they could bring the road in there, and then actually add parking along that, too. Just make it wide enough, just straight up, with parking all on the one side. Now they don't need to park out on Fitzgerald. They can come around the corner, and there's at least enough room in there for like about eight cars. And plus, the fire trucks could then come straight down. So anyway, it was just something I was looking at, in my, you know, my opinion. So...
Are there other questions of staff? Seeing none. Does the developer want to come up? We asked that you come up to the microphone, so that those watching you on television can hear you live.
So our client could be here tonight?
If you could come up to the microphone at the podium.
Straight down, just there, get him off the street.
I'm Nick Coniff with Cos Wilson Architects.
And Logan Kern with Cos Wilson Architects.
So our client, who's Common Bond, actually got the stomach flu last minute. So he planned to be here, but fortunately, you just have us tonight. But we can help you with architectural-related questions and site plan stuff, if you've got any more. Specifically, the tot lot, your question, Commissioner, a lot of these affordable housing projects get financing through Minnesota Housing and Finance Agency. And they have a hard and fast rule that they don't want us to put the tot lot across a drive aisle. So that's why we try to keep it.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying the tot move over. I was saying move the tot aisle up to the, or the tot lot up to the north side where that road was coming in. But...
Absolutely.
The city shut that down, I don't know for what reason, but they shut that down.
Yep.
So I wasn't going to move it across the parking lot. I was just going to move it up around the corner, because I'm sure the building has a door coming out the north end, and it would go right into the tot lot.
Yeah.
Right.
Makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely.
And we cannot move the, the north drive aisle any further towards the intersection, because then that creates a hazard with the in-and-out traffic on the intersection. So that's actually... Right. Where it is now is at 50 feet, which is the threshold for that safety requirement. So in regards to the tot lot and the, you know, the fire truck concern, that's going to be the one that drives where that goes. And with this being so preliminary, you know, if the building moves to the north or to the south, can we, can we get that room for the tot lot to squeeze in and shave, shave the parking towards the building to allow for the fire truck? So that's, you know, we've, we've read the fire chief's concerns, and we are going to...
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, make all, make the efforts to make that happen. So...
Are there questions of commissioners? Commissioner Patti?
I'm curious about the makeup of this site here. What, I was just looking at, you know, an aerial of it. Is that where you're showing the stormwater, is that just a depression, or is that a wetland? Or what, what is that?
To be totally honest, that's a rough guess at this point. It's an indication that we, because we don't have a civil engineer engaged yet, so preliminarily. But we know that we will need to do something to manage our stormwater. It's really just an indication that we're aware of those, that that will be something we'll need to do.
Is there, okay, this is totally, and that's fine. We'll wait to see what the deal is on that. Why the dog park?
I don't, Logan, you have a little more background on it, but I spoke to our client briefly before, when he told me he couldn't make it today. And he, I think there's, it's very preliminary conversation, as Donovan mentioned, but it's an idea that it could be a public park, and that it could, I think, serve the fact that it... it could be a, a public park and that it could, I think, uh, serve the fact that it was near the vet clinic there and that it had the, the bump in, which it sounds like maybe already being used. But I think that's as far as.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I just, I was curious. I mean, obviously there's, you know, I could see there was some, some rationale for it. I was just curious where that idea came, came from.
Yeah.
Those usually just flow to the surface, you know?
Yep. Yeah. It was, uh, like Nick said, it was a preliminary concept idea that the, that Common Bond had brought forth, um, you know, in lieu of, or, you know, part of the, uh, parks dedication and public land, that if we provided a public amenity that, you know, it could benefit not only the, the residents of the apartment building, but the vet clinic and just the community around, around there that, you know, could use it.
So on this tot lot thing that's come up in the fire truck layout and stuff here, I'm just wondering if that, um, you know, the triangular section down, I mean, is there a reason why it was located, you know, kind of on the north end versus the south end? Is a, I, wait, I haven't seen a, a layout, floor plan of the building itself yet to know where your two or three or.
No.
You know, the different sizes of, of units are going to be. I was just wondering if you could take advan, you know, I understand you've got a limitation of that drive going. In fact, I was surprised it was as close as it was. Uh, but, uh, you've got that triangle at the south end there. I'm just wondering if you could angle that drive and create a space on the south end of the building there, plan south. Uh, it's not perfectly south, but plan south on the building where you could put that tot lot.
Yeah. Actually, both of your guys' ideas is exactly what we, when we read the report, that's, that's probably the two we'll first try it, you know? And to be honest, like, we don't know the exact length of this building yet. And so once we get into the finer details, but both of those ideas were exactly where our heads went. So we'll, we'll get in there and see exactly the dimensions we're working with. And, you know, the tot lot doesn't need to be square. So I think.
How many, how many square feet does it need to be?
I think.
Is there any limit or?
Twenty, twenty by twenty.
Oh, so it's not very big.
Right.
No.
Right. And there, um, it's very faint, but in the southeast corner, coming from the bank, kind of, uh, curb cut, there is a dash line with a question mark and there is a curb cut built in. And we had, you know, played around with the, that being a secondary entrance on the south side of the building. Um, but then it, concerns came up with if that, once that bank does get going again, um, then it's resident traffic intersecting with, you know, bank traffic. So where that, a, and then you get into the two, the two intersections are two, you know, drive aisles right next to each other. That's not the safest. Um, so, so.
Wonder if it could be combined into one or, um.
Right.
Yeah. You wouldn't want, you, you would wanna be careful there.
Mm-hmm.
On the closeness. But to get twenty by twenty wouldn't take, you know, you wouldn't have to move that very far. So you wouldn't have to move that all the way down there to get that.
Right, right.
Yeah. You could even curve it in there.
Um, Commissioner Young, to address your, uh, well, I guess, two times the dumpster location enclosure has come up. Um, that is actually, our trash room is inside the building. So we don't have a external enclosure. So that's where that's treated.
Yep.
So where do mattresses and televisions and et cetera go?
In that room.
In that room. It's, it's.
Until they're hauled out to the, get picked up.
Okay. And how big is that room, please?
Typically, I mean, it's a dedicated trash room for the, the rollout containers and recycling room. Um, the chutes go down into the same room. Um, I mean, a building this size.
I think it's been.
So you're going to have separate trash and recycling chute?
Chutes, yes.
Yes.
I am impressed.
Oh, yeah. We've done, I think this will be our fifth building with this developer and that's what they've done every single time. So that's kind of their, their thing, I guess. But yeah, we'll have a dedicated room inside.
And, um, regarding the size, I mean, it's dependent on the, you know, the amount of units, the size that we have.
The number of poles per week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So I, I mean, it, it, you know, it, that's a variable that is addressed per the need.
Are there other questions of the developer?
One, one more. Do you know how far it is from the, on the south side, the driveway you've got planned and the entrance to the bank down there? Do you know what the footage is roughly?
Um, well, if the, if the, the north entrance to the corner is fifty, uh, I didn't measure that one specifically, but I mean, you can guesstimate about seventy-five.
Seventy, seventy-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Batty, do you have?
So Donovan, um, you guys can chime in too. I'm, I'm just curious about, um, how a decision gets made on where the building is gonna be placed. I mean, do, do we get, I mean, are there preliminary meetings with the city? Or is this, is this a function of the, of, of the, uh, P U D? Um, I mean, how do you decide? How is that decision made?
Um, well, basically, you know, this was, we were accepting what the, you know, what the developer has submitted. Um, I, I thought this was actually a, a good orientation on the site since, um, this is largely a southern exposure here. So it would, you know, just be the warmer in the winter, just more, more, uh, more easy, you know, snow could melt off it easier. And, you know, and so that's how I saw it. Um, and, uh, and basically because they decided to do that entrance from the parking lot, um, it kind of oriented building that way. There wasn't a need for much upfront as far as kind of an entrance to kind of welcome people in that way. And Commissioner Young, it seems like you have a, you have some input.
I think that before, I want to spend a whole lot of time picking on this site and the orientation. I would like to get to the next piece of the discussion, which is the appropriateness of this particular four-story building of a multi-unit residential on this particular piece of property. Um, and I think that is the next piece of our discussion that I don't know where the rest of the planning commission is going to fall on that or the rest of the city.
Mm-hmm. Is, uh, is everyone else ready to move on?
I have other questions too, but we can be pretty fluid here.
Yeah, we can be.
If you want to go through your concerns, Susan, we can go with that. I have a list of things here, but I can be patient.
This project is definitely needed in Forest Lake. It is my belief that this is the wrong location within the Headwaters development for this. Um, you have not done anything regarding, um, elevations as seen from the parkway or from the future road or, or any of that. Um, the four, the four-story squished between the one story and the, and the one and a half story, um, is going to be visually really jarring. Um, the, the plan for this, and I grant that, that the entire development has not gone the way we had hoped it would when, when we approved the original P U D. But this commercial core was very, very important to the vision of the P U D. Um, and I expect that as the, um, buildings on the other side, um, continue to grow, uh, and you, you have those buildings occupied, as we continue to have more and more of the residential, single-family and, and, um, townhome residential built out in this P U D, we are getting more and more folks taking the transit at the transit center, using the Y, using the, the government center, that that commercial will fill in there. And, and quite frankly, that is the perfect place for the commercial within this entire P U D. Yes, I would have loved for it to be there already. Um, but I don't believe that this multi-unit residential building is going to be appropriate at this particular location within the P U D. I think that there are better locations for it, um, that would retain the vision of the P U D, the need within the next five years for significant commercial in there. Um, and would quite frankly better serve the residents than being within a highly traveled. The, the, the roads are going to really constrain the feeling of, of the development for residential folks. Um, the other side, Donovan, help me with the name of the road that goes off of two hundred and second and wines and.
Fitzgerald. Forest Road.
Forest Road. Thank you. Um, on the other side of Forest Road, you've, you've got a good residential feel there. Um, but quite frankly, between, um, tucking this between the two roads that are going to be fairly heavily traveled and then with the airplanes above, I'm, I'm afraid that, that this is not going to be a good residential feel for the folks that are living there. Um, I, again, I want this facility in Forest Lake. The, the need for especially the two and three bedroom apartments is, is well demonstrated. The fact that it's in the Headwaters development that has the transit and the library and the Y and the, and the trail is a good thing, but I don't believe that this is the proper place within this P U D for this particular building.
I can jump into my concerns too. I, I, to some degree, share Susan's. Um, however, I do see how this property could work here.
Four-story.
But I don't see all of the, the pieces functioning just yet. Um, for me, the, um, the aspect that we're completely changing that from the original commercial plan to residential, um, I can grasp that that's possible. However, having a extremely large parking lot facing a parkway to me is very awkward. And so, you know, having a piece of code that we have in our standards where we're going to give you extreme freedom on adjusting the parking situation that this building otherwise would require, um, for me would require extensive landscaping between that parking lot and the parkway, um, to the point where that parkway is going to have the feel that Mr. Pratt's initial plans had fifteen years ago, plus when they were originally presented to us. Um, so that's, that's one piece with the development. The, uh, the dog park, um, as it's labeled on the map, um, for me is almost a non-starter. I would not label anything that is in lieu of park dedication fee to be a specific type of park. If it was just park and the park board went with that, I'd be comfortable with that, but I am not comfortable saying in any plans, here is what this type of park is gonna be and essentially setting that in perpetuity. Um, I think cities get in trouble when they own golf courses or dog parks and those become parts of a development because then they're almost withheld from actually being able to do anything different with that at some point down the road. Um, so if it was park, I'd be comfortable with it if and only if the park board was comfortable with it. Um, that said, I would be shocked if they would be comfortable with it because it's not in their long-term plans. Um, there is not a neighborhood park or anything in our twenty forty plans to put something in or even close to that. Um, our, I believe it's our second largest, one of our signature parks in town. Um, Fenway Park is just to the northwest of this. We have, um, recently expanded, I believe on the other property, just north of it, uh, some trails and stuff that connect over to that.
There'll be more ball fields in there?
We have, um, a huge parkway. We have a, a large trail that runs all the way up to town and down into Hugo. Um, there is an enormous amount of exercise and park opportunity within walking distance of that. And quite frankly, there's a lot of developed areas in Forest Lake that you have to jump in a car and drive miles to get to a park or a trail. Um, and so I would be shocked if the park board all of a sudden prioritize this. They do have a dog park on their long-term plans. Um, it's not the top priority as I recall. I believe it's a little ways down the list. Um, but that said, and I'm not a dog owner, I have been in the past, um, so I don't frequent dog parks, but this seems more like a poodle park to me than a dog park. Um, the, the space is just not ample enough. Um, if it was a private park that was either a function of this complex or that complex and the veterinary place next door that you seem to be, uh, having some discussion about a land swap, it appears like, uh, I would be more open to that, but not as in lieu of the parkland dedication fee. The, um, the concern I would have then is there is drainage that is going, what I would think, right into a stormwater pond. Um, the amount of phosphorus that is going to dump into that stormwater pond would be astronomical. And I would want to make certain that that was without question mitigated. And I'm sure the local watershed district would as well. I'm glad to see that the dumpsters are inside. Um, I had that as one of the highlights of, I didn't want to see that visible from the parkway. Um, I would like to see on the plan how you're gonna pull that in and out. Um, I don't see any concrete going up to the building, but at least to know where that truck's gonna come in and out and if that's gonna cause any disturbance. But I, I get that this is early in the plans, but later. The, um, the other thing I don't see on the plan at this point, and, and I don't necessarily believe it has to be, um, but in a later, um, piece, if we're going to accommodate a reduction in parking, which I'm open to and have supported on other projects in Forest Lake, I would like to see a proof of parking so that if that parking does not work, where you would put that. Um, and staff can walk you through how other developers have presented that to us in the past. The, um, the masonry, uh, request, I'm open to that as well. Um, however, I would like to see significant renditions of every direction, um, particularly from the parkway, um, and the major roads to the north and to the east to know what is this gonna look like? Is this going to change the complete feel of how this development was envisioned? Um, because quite frankly, I think it will. Um, what I'll say yes to and no to, I, I, it would be hard for me to verbalize without seeing anything.
Sure.
But I wouldn't want to put a, a cheap-looking building in an area that has probably some of the most significant investment in any area Forest Lake has that's undeveloped or significantly undeveloped at this point. Those are kind of my main comments. Are there others from Commissioner Keen?
Well, if you pull up page thirteen, so the last one, the drawing for the aerial view, it's, um.
The aerial view?
Yeah, I think it's page thirteen. What I'm saying is, you know, we, we, they've got the comments made up, uh, no, that's not, I think it's further down.
The straight.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, the fire chief commented on, on certain things and, and the city has, uh, shows, you know, they can't come in from the north. So, you know, have you, have you come up with any other ideas to, that you brought with us tonight or brought with you tonight? Cause like that, I, you know, like that, you weren't sure about the stormwater pond. Is that the shape of it? Or could that get moved further south and at a different angle? And then maybe the dog park shortened up a little bit, just make it a park or whatever. And then that way, you know, that parking lot on the north park could be set back further, set further west and then the fire trucks can come through and, I mean, any of that? set further west and then the fire trucks can come through and, I mean, any of that?
Certainly possible. The stormwater, definitely we would need a civil engineer weighing in, looking at grades and what sort of infiltration is necessary or something, but it definitely is, it could move.
It just seems like there's so much, and they're not little things, that just need to be tweaked or changed or.
Absolutely.
Because the way I, the way I see it right now, this isn't a fit. And you came here tonight after these other, you know, not just the fire chief, but other things that have been mentioned, and it doesn't seem like you had any real answers for anything yet. So I feel that, you know, maybe it needs some more work and come back with another plan or diagram and we'll see what happens then.
Sure.
Commissioner Miller?
Hi.
Hi, hello.
I really like the plan. Just some questions on some thoughts. I'm thinking about this from a real estate standpoint and so I don't see any covered parking, exterior garages or any interior parking at all. So that's, your idea is nothing at all for parking other than outside?
Yep.
Okay. Just curious, has your other buildings you've done, that's the way you've done them?
Yes, for this developer.
For this developer?
Yep.
And it seems to move the product just fine?
Yep.
Are you able to keep your costs lower that way or for the apartment rental or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. In town, you know, we've built, you know, a few buildings and, you know, on the other end of town, we've built a building that has some retail and some commercial on the first floor. Was that ever a consideration to maybe, you know, put that building maybe against Fitzgerald and maybe make it an L-shaped building and maybe on the first floor, maybe put in some retail and some commercial spots there that would kind of fit in with our idea of using this property for more commercial and retail?
We've certainly done projects like that in our office. Our client kind of comes to us with a program and they tell us, you know, we're looking for X, Y, and Z in the building. They did not ask us to have any retail or commercial. I mean, we certainly have that experience in our firm and I don't know Donovan's conversations with the developer, but that was not a part of our discussion with our client at least.
Yeah, from a personal standpoint, I would be more excited. I mean, I love the concept. We need, we need, you know, the building, we need the, we need the housing. I would love to see that building turned a different direction. My preference is having it facing Fitzgerald and if it has to be L-shaped to get the amount of units out of it that you can, I think that would cut down on the just general appearance when you're driving up 61 or coming up Headwater, you don't see this huge four-story building. But I would really love to see, you know, to kind of fitting in with our whole concept in that area, some commercial and retail on that first floor. That's my thoughts.
We can, yeah, we'll bring that up.
It's funny, the one note that I didn't go over was, and I don't mean to put your idea down, I think Mr. Miller made some good points. But I was thinking the building might actually be nicer if, as it's constructed today without commercial, if it was commercial Fitzgerald makes a lot of sense, but if it was just residential, if the parking lot faced, I don't know these streets well. It's Headwaters Boulevard.
Oh, sure.
And the building faced the.
The parkway?
The parkway, so that your patio faced a parkway, so that your tot lot could theoretically be facing the parkway, which seems to make a lot more sense from a livability standpoint. And then you have a parking lot facing a road that doesn't have, or that will, you know, eventually have other parking lots and commercial hopefully on the other side of it. Seems to fit that region better. Commissioner Brink?
Yeah, just to piggyback off the parking situation, I was just wondering with the other properties that Common Bond has, at least with this one that you're working with, how they work with stumble removal and how, you know, if there's no underground parking, if you have a stumble removal day, you've got all these residents with all these cars that have to put these cars somewhere for all that removal, how does that happen on the other properties?
I honestly don't know. I, I don't know how they do that, I'm sorry. I could, if our client was here, he would definitely have more, and we could maybe provide something in writing, an explanation on that.
The reason I ask is I did home health nursing for many years and I actually know a lot of the Common Bond properties like the back of my hand and I talked to a lot of the residents. One of the big concerns is when they have a lot of snow days, what they have to do is they move all their cars. Well, some of these properties, they've got like a supermarket or something that's close by or whatever it might be, they just go over to the other side. Obviously, there's a lot of limited area, you know, for parking. And so that would be a concern of mine is where all these cars are going to go if all of a sudden it just, you know, we have a lot of snow days.
Yeah.
Where are they going to be parking?
We can ask about that, how they deal with that. That's a good question.
Commissioner Batty?
Donovan, the front side yard, rear yard, how does it come into play with a site like this where you've got streets on three sides of it?
Well, it's interesting because if it's a commercial property, every public frontage is a front, is a front yard, so it's, but I would, you know, I would treat this as, I think I treat this as that. So there would be the required probably 30 feet, you know, setback from, you know, all public, you know, from the, you know, the lot lines.
So what's the right-of-way width of that Headwaters, that street?
I believe it's 60. Well, this one, you know, the way it's designed.
Is it shown on a 30-foot setback? It doesn't really look like.
No, but I mean, I think that how it'll be eventually constructed is, is this can use straight? Because actually, it's interesting, the, some of the infrastructure was already, the hydrants were actually already, you know, installed.
Ground was already there.
Yeah, so there'd have to be some modification. But it kind of, you can kind of see how. So like these, you know, and these are storms or inlets. So, you know, then they, anyway, so, I mean, that's much greater detail, but, you know, they would have to engineer it to either do the, you know, cut out as originally planned or construct it as, you know, as the general, you know, commercial width road.
See, since you have that up on the screen, is that dark, that big dark spot in the middle, is that, is that the, where they plant on the stormwater?
Yeah, so what we know about this is it's not wetlands. So that was the first concern.
It's not a wetland.
You know, and that kind of blob is just meant to be just representative. It's not meant to be anything more because, you know, there's extensive amount of stormwater calculations.
It's just like a low spot in the ground and it's heavy vegetation in there.
Correct.
When this was taken, okay?
Right.
Are there other questions or feedback?
There's that huge stormwater pond that's to the, to the west.
Correct.
Clear.
YMCA.
Is that just for everything that's north of there?
That's to be determined.
That a regional pond?
You know, oftentimes these are, I mean, it's a regional pond. Oftentimes they're designed for this maximum amount of impervious so that, you know, stormwater isn't needed to be placed on each individual site. I'm not sure exactly, and you can see where these flows currently do go into that from the street. But, you know, you know, once they get, you know, a, you know, a strong, a solid site plan, then they'll undergo the, submit it to the Rice Creek Watershed District for that, that sort of, those conversations and understand exactly what is, what is needed for that property, for stormwater management.
Commissioner Young?
I just want to reiterate that what you're doing is you're setting those two commercial buildings up for future failure. They're going to be two islands that will never be connected to another commercial thing that people would, would come to. And you're setting up your residence to be sort of an inverse island in the middle of significant streets and those two commercial properties. I am really not at all comfortable with this particular use on this particular location, especially since we are hearing more and more that people want commercial opportunities, commercial buildings, the ability to have a restaurant, a small grocery, a dry cleaner services that will serve those residential areas that are now building in. And so that's why I'm reluctant to get into huge amounts of detail on this and kind of had hoped that the decision would be flipped. The discussion tonight would be, would be a little bit flipped. I just, again, as I, as I, and I'm, I'm not the artist that Dennis is, but as I, as I visualize this, this bank building and this veterinary and this multi-unit, and the styles of the three structures in that area and then how it matches with things in the other, other sides, I am really not at all comfortable with this particular project in this, in this location. Yes, I want the project, but there are many other areas within the Headwaters that I think this would be more appropriate.
Commissioner Young, I have a question if you entertain it. Commissioner Miller described a multi-use building potentially with a first floor of commercial adjacent to Fitzgerald, like the new complex on the north side of town. Would that be more fitting?
That might be more fitting, but I don't think that Common Bond is going to be able to get the density of dwelling units that will fit their economic model. Yeah, that, I could probably live with that depending on how it's, how it's structured and configured, but this is, the uses here are getting mashed, mashed together in a way that does not look either thoughtful or planned or convenient for anyone.
Thank you.
I would.
Commissioner Brink?
Yeah, I'd probably concur. I think there definitely is a need for the two or three bedroom. I do like the project. It just, for some reason, that area just doesn't seem to be very cohesive as far as putting the whole commercial thing up kind of altogether. I think with the first floor commercial part or with having stores or whatever it might be, I think that's a good idea, but, yeah, it's just something that just doesn't seem right about having that kind of smack dab in between. That's my two cents.
Commissioner Batty?
So what's the, the land to the east and the northeast, you know, that is, would be on the other side of, I'm just looking at that, looks like, I think it's the original PUD drawing there of this area that shows the larger thing. I mean, it shows up here, but that, that land that is to the east between this new street, I can't, I never remember the name of this new thing here, Headwater something. And then Highway 61 here. This, that land right in there, I mean, how is that, how is that guided? I should have looked that up, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'd like to introduce that into the conversation. So currently, the, you know, this is, you know, there's a long history with this from original concept. We actually did have some multiple family within this village area to, you know, how it got zoned, which is the image I showed you with the retail and the parking. And that's how it got zoned with basic neighborhood commercial. So it was a neighborhood commercial node, and it was just these, you know, your basic, you know, retail and service uses. And then, you know, things such as like the veterinary that's in there now currently or gas station. So what, you know, in this soon-to-be-adopted 2040 plan, this is zoned, the future land use category is mixed use. And this mixed use category includes the, you know, the Headwaters 123 city-owned property nearby and, you know, this Highway 61, you know, fronting property all the way down to the city southern border. What's, what is, you know, what's guided to be used, you know, to be located within this mixed use category is a range of retail, office, service and multiple family residential uses with residential densities between 10 to 15 units per acre, which this property does comply with that density. And mixed use districts requires a 50% residential development minimum with the remaining percentage available to permitted commercial, retail and service uses. So this is where, you know, the property is guided in the future.
Okay.
And so that's where, you know, in our conversations with Common Bond, that's where they're coming from is that what we had is neighborhood commercial, that's changing and probably many of those uses will be, will be within the zoning district that, the future zoning district for this area. And there is this requirement of a 50% residential. There is not, as I'll note, a requirement of the 50% commercial. And, you know, and this, I think was the idea was that, and, you know, we're, this is something we've discussed as plan commission or, you know, over a period of time. You know, it's meant to be kind of the mixed use where you do have, you know, retail uses, you have customers nearby, there's kind of the walkable neighborhood, there's kind of integration of land uses. And essentially, that is what Common Bond is proposing at this point. And it's not integrated within the same building, but they're within close proximity.
Could you please pull back to the, to the map? Thank you. Within that entire orange striped area, 50%, but the trick for thoughtful planning is that you do not have jarring uses and styles and services crammed onto each other. And that is, that is what this is going to feel like. Is there, there will not be any contiguous feel. It'll be, hi, here's the bank, hi, here's the four-story. Then there's a, there's a separate, and the ability to get some synergy between the properties in this area would be very, very difficult unless you radically redesigned the building to sort of flow into the other two.
Well, I mean, part of that is aesthetics, part of it could be, you know, design standards that match different buildings. This is a 3.8 acre site. It's large. And so, you know, it's, there's going to be a mix of different, there are different bulks of buildings.
And I get that, but I'm looking at the uses, I'm looking at the very, I think that we've all heard from residents in the area that when are they going to start building in the Headwaters in that part of town, the restaurants and the commercial and the services and the things like that? And that's where they were designed to be. This, this doesn't feel. This doesn't feel well-planned to me, but I will, I continue to listen.
Did you have something to add?
Yeah, my name is Len Pratt. Chair and commissioners, I'm respectfully listening. This is a mix of uses, housing and retail and service. If we could get that map up there again, take a look, that shows the adjacent property that Dennis Batty wanted up. You can kind of see the property right across the street. If I had a pointer here.
Right. This one, the Cross Anderson.
Yeah, right there.
One property.
Just run your pen up to Highway 61. That's over by Cross Anderson, that property. Over to 61, there's the trail. And go up to the parking right property, no, not, you're too far. Run it against that parking line.
Yeah, right there.
Right up there. And when we think about where to put a house and where not to put a house, we're kind of assuming that, you know, Common Bond thought this through and where it's located there. there versus, say, along Highway 61 or somewhere else in this area, they thoughtfully did this. Now, I think what we need to see is more detail, kind of a flyover maybe of how this massing might look, because when you get into a mixed-use project, you're going to see a variety of building types, you know, mixing of uses is what this is all about. And I'm not ready to say that the aesthetics need to be judged by a one-dimensional drawing.
I understand that.
Okay, so we took what you're saying now, and we're going to come back and we're going to be able to explain to you by visualization process how this is all going to blend together. Okay? So we know that the 2040 plan is guided for residential, mix of uses in here. We listened to that, and we're in favor of that. You know, when we started and now versus where it is, we talk about restaurants and grocery stores, if you go right across Highway 61, there's nothing there. You really need to be surrounded with housing to service all this. And I understand it takes time to have all this happen, but the reality is a little more housing in the guided plan 2040 will actually continue to support retail, retail and restaurant. Right now, there isn't enough, you know, housing units there to do that. And this is a step along the way, you know, and I want you just to be patient now as we're going to go through this if we can, be a little more positive about this perspective, you know? And we'll come back, we've been listening, you know, in all fairness, but I think we've heard now enough, you know, gives us our basis to do some revisions, okay, and come back to you again. How's that sound?
What I want you to understand well is how the existing bank is going to be a service and a draw for the people in the apartment building, and how the apartment building is going to be a good neighbor for the bank.
Yeah.
And on the other side, and why that is a better place for that 53 units, four stories, than.
On the other side, on the other side of the road?
Mr. Pratt, the amount of mixed-use development in that area writ large is very significant.
Yeah.
And mixed use does not mean disparate commercial, large apartment, disparate commercial. It means a cohesive plan that lead, that if one goes to one's bank, then one would also go to another commercial establishment in that same parking area.
Yeah, understood, and I think we just need more time to think this through, okay, and we'll be able to more effectively address your concerns. This becomes an attractive place to live, you know, with all the things we've got going on here, the trails, the park, the YMCA, the service center, the park and ride, you know, right there, that's what people want to live next to, you know, they want to be a part of that, and this is a first step along the way, and we want to be able to show you how this is all going to work in the end. If I could just, I get it, I do. Houses will come in here and other buildings will come in here, and it'll add all, it'll make sense if we can kind of just think along with what you've asked us to do, okay? Show you more.
Mr. Batty?
Just one more 30,000 square foot asset, this thing here. Is this property to the east and the north, is that going to be significantly limited in any way by the runway corridor there?
Across 61, you can't put things because of the runway. Directly across 61.
We're not directly in line.
No.
We're not directly in line. I'm looking at it on my cellphone here, but.
Mr. Batty, we're not.
Here's the line where there's any sort of limitation.
Okay, so it is this, so it's that, okay, so that's, yeah, okay, I got that. So, you know, I just, you know, been on the Plan Commission here long enough to see a number of these projects to the north there, you know, kind of, you know, begin to come to fruition and at least be talked about and stuff, and I've just, you know, I've kind of wondered what it is, you know, what kind of catalyst it's going to take to jump-start this retail and restaurants and this, whatever, you know, that we've, that's been talked about for this area, you know, every time I drive by this, you know, I kind of wonder, you know, what's it going to take?
A mental health center.
Yeah. If I could just interject here a little bit, if I could, you know, all right. The issue about what supports a restaurant, you know, I know something about that. My son owns two of them. And the issue is how many rooftops are there in the immediate surrounding area, okay, that would actually choose to daily visit a restaurant or a service? You know, we mentioned dry cleaner. What options are there that would, excuse me, what other proof that there's a market other than more housing around it? And this economy has evolved, and now it's come back a bit. We're not in a robust Katy bar the door economy here, but this is evolving. The good news is the bank is now a Bell Bank. That's big, that's good news. The good news is that the veterinarian wants to expand, we're working with them now, including some more parking, or, excuse me, Planet Commission, Planet Commission, Young, you know, there's some more things that are going on because the economy is permitting something to occur here, I think, underneath it all, now Common Bond. They like the location. And one thing begets another, okay, and this is a first step, and we salute the fact that this has been guided now in 2040 as a mix of uses. Thank you. That enables this to kind of occur, this idea of development. I think that's the best way to approach this. What does the marketplace give us? What have we got invested here? City investment, county investment, YMCA investment, all of the trails and so on that are in here? What is it kind of telling us? Well, it tells us that, you know, there should be some housing in here. That's what the 2040 guide is, and we're not done yet. Like I said, there's, a significant part of the property is not developed here, you know? And if there's a veterinarian on one side and a bank on the other, that's a mix of use. It is. And I get the fact that we can buffer along the Parkway, no problem, and that's the sort of thing that we're going to be able to show you when we come back. Thank you for your input, you know, that's what we're here to do.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Yep.
And I don't see a huge audience, but was there anyone in attendance that is itching to speak?
And I'd just like to make one comment. Mr. Pratt, thank you for that. You know, I've been in real estate, I'm going in my 36th year, and you can't get the restaurants, you can't get the commercial, you can't get all that unless we have the housing. And if we could figure out how to get more housing in this area that fits into our plan and a mixed use, you see all kinds of things, Commissioner Young, you see apartments, you see, you know, churches, you see, you know, you see everything in mixed use, and honestly, that's what people want. They want walkability, they want to be able to walk out their door and walk across the street to the bank and walk across the street to the veterinary clinic or walk across to the laundromat or walk across to the YMCA. That's what people are choosing today, and I really think this is something that we should really strongly consider and encourage these guys to keep working on that plan. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, one last, and I understand that completely, and in this larger, larger planned unit development, I think that there are better locations that will remain walkable to the services, and these apartments are not the folks that are going to be going to significant restaurants and other commercial. This is, that's not what this is, and I just think that there is a better location that will provide more room and a little bit less shoehorning and leave the opportunity for a small commercial node that will be walkable by all of the multi-unit developments that are in this area in the future. But I will, I look forward to seeing the next iteration. Thank you.
Another comment? Donovan, did you have anything else to add with this or that you were looking for from us?
No, no, I think we've had a good, robust conversation. I appreciate that. I think the project team appreciates it, too.
Thank you for answering all of our questions. We'll move on to other business then. Do you have anything for us?
I do, I mean, it's not much that I have news, except that we did receive another review letter from the Metropolitan Council regarding the comp plan, and it was down to three items, all regarding sanitary sewer capacity plans, and we did, Bolton Bank did, you know, reply promptly, and Ryan does comment that this is a, this phenomenon of continued more and more rigorous review of sanitary sewer systems, sanitary systems for cities and comp plans is metro-wide. So they're not picking on us, but we do not have a, you know, comp plan to present before City Council to, for their formal adoption. And I don't know when that'll be, but I'm still hoping it's coming soon.
Donovan, Mike, when do you want to start looking at some zoning code changes? Because there are going to be significant things that we're going to have to go through that zoning code, and I don't want to be trying to finish up the zoning code a year before we start our next comp plan.
I think we need to schedule some meetings over the winter and just create agendas, you know, create some agendas for this. I think, you know, one thing that's present for me, it's kind of part of this whole area, is that, you know, this area that the city owns, you know, we've been calling it Headwaters 123, 123 acres, it's currently not zoned for what we're marketing it for. I mean, it's not even zoned in the comp plan either. And so, and I really kind of see this whole mixed use is different than what we call mixed use elsewhere in the city, you know, and this walkability and everything, you know, we're not going to see the walkability, I believe, along Highway 61 like this. Maybe we'll see the walkability here, maybe this is a separate, a separate district, but, you know, I don't know if this becomes business park, which is, which would, you know, or include some uses of business park, which is this gray area here, where data center is a permitted use.
I don't know what you're looking at. Not connected anymore. I'm sorry, sir.
How long are you going to let me talk?
The whole time.
I was waiting for a breath so that I could break in, sir, I'm sorry.
I apologize. This is something we were looking at earlier. So, yeah, this mixed-use area, you know, as seen in that, you know, in this, you know, category, I mean, we looked at this, and it's a 2040 vision, but it's going to be different than what we currently call, it's not going to become like, you know, general mixed use like this area is right here. So we will be, I believe, making up new zoning district standards, and as well as this Headwaters 123, which is, you know, is part of this, you know, multi-county, you know, tech corridor initiative, you know, the city is looking, you know, trying to create this as the shovel-ready data center site. Data centers are a permitted use in this business park, this is the future land use category, but the boundaries correspond to the business park zoning district. So is it, there's some business, you know, park zoned here, and then maybe the comp plan amendment to allow that, or maybe it's introduced as a use with, you know, certain design standards, like you need to have a 120-acre site to put a data center in or something like that? But, and these are all conversations, I think, are ripe to have, and I agree with you that there's some, and even, you know, having conversations about design standards for multiple-family buildings as well. And then, you know, picking up again, you know, I'd like to start with continuing the PUD conversation that we initiated and, you know, having continued, so, I mean.
Donovan, I'll be very interested to see if you decide that every five-acre parcel, which is, this is essentially with the bank and the whatever, and the bank, the apartment building, and the, that's essentially a five-acre parcel, if you're going to be requiring every five-acre piece to be at least 50% residential, or if you're going to be looking at it as this large cross-hatched area would be 50% residential or more. And that's my concern, it feels, this just feels forced and not, we jammed something down in here because it was a piece of land that somebody wants to have sold and go away not because this fits a vision or this fits future uses that folks would be comfortable with. And I guess I'm the only one that feels that way, but that's okay, it's first time.
For the record, I share some of your concerns. I think she makes a good point, though, with having these conversations sooner than waiting until the last minute, and I believe a couple other Commissioners have made similar points through the process. And perhaps some of these, we haven't had many meetings in the last five or six months. I don't know if that's going to, that trend will continue, but maybe when we know that that is coming up or likelihood or just maybe plan, so when that happens, that we have a workshop and we sit down and have more of an informal conversation and go through this stuff to give you feedback, and here's what we're looking for. To Susan's point, you know, the five-acre parcels, maybe we need to wordsmith things and say, "within such a distance," or we need to, you know, piece these things off so our intent is more forthright than what we're hoping for. I might suggest that maybe Commissioners provide you with a list of the items of text that they would like to prioritize, and then you bring that forward to us in a workshop setting, particularly when we don't have other things on the agenda the same night.
What the devil do you perceive highway commercial to be? And how does that, because my vision of highway commercial appears to be much different than the significant piece of highway commercial that is included in the 2040 plan.
Okay.
Ain't no highway there.
Lot sizing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a whole workshop on that alone, you know, and I think that's one of, should be one of, I personally think that should be one of our priorities. If we're genuinely interested in drawing developers in here, I absolutely think we've got to address, we and the City Council have to address this as soon as we can. I mean, if what Len's said, you know, is true, and I know it is, you know, particularly for, you know, I'm, because of my background and stuff like that, you know, I'm just not, well, that's enough said about that. But anyway, I just, I want, I want Forest Lake to be attractive for developers to come in and develop this south side of the community here, you know, which includes housing, you know, and I, there's no question about the fact that, you know, our culture is changing, you know, and some of the things that have been norms for a long time are shifting, and we're, you know, we'll miss out if we don't, if we don't, I'm not asking, I'm not saying we need to just rush in there and just, you know, get something slammed in place, you know, just so that we can have it.
I don't want to look like Hugo over by Wagner's.
Okay, I'm with you, but I just, and that's what I, obviously, that's what I'm passionate about, and I just think if we're genuinely concerned, and genuinely interested in seeing developers come in here, we need to make this, we need to make this underlying come in here, we need to make this, we need to make the, this underlying, you know, zoning and lot size and that whole, you know, that whole side thing, so that it, it meets what our cul, you know, what our culture is, is looking for in, in housing.
When we first looked at this PUD, long, long ago, council members, you're already remember this, we went on a bus trip to some of the other similar developments.
I was on it with you.
Pardon me?
I said, "I was on it with you."
And quite frankly, that development down on Manning, just north of 36, has held up well and is the design standard that I was looking for. And that little commercial area...
On the east side of the road there?
Yeah, yeah. And that, that...
Same developer, too, by the way.
Yes, yes, I know, I know. Which is why I brought that particular one up. Yeah. And, and, and that was his vision. And that was something that I bought strongly into, because I see that that little commercial area has remained viable through the ups and the downs and the, and the, the rich and the poor. That little commercial area has remained viable. Some things have gone, some things have added, but it's been good. And so I'm not ready yet to lose that vision that we had for this entire Headwaters project.
Just to clarify, is that you're talking about where the Liberty Homes are?
Yes, yeah.
But that's also because there's a lot of residential homes on that side of the road.
Well, and, and that's what...
And it's Manning and, and 12th, there is a busy intersection, so that does a lot with the QuickTrip gas station and...
But there's no transit there, there's no library, there's no Y. So that the other things that we have here and that we've put in as part of the vision for the big PUD, which was quite frankly, to have a boatload more homes there by now, all right? Those homes are going to come to this PUD area. I, I have no, absolutely no doubt about it. Because the, the amenities that, that both the city and, and others in the county have, have put in there, let's just say that YMCA set national records for the number, for the speed at which it filled up.
Wow.
Yeah. The desire is there.
Do you have enough on the list, Donovan, or do you want us to keep going?
I'm taking notes. I just want to address that I'm, I'm not, you know, intentionally scaring away applicants so we don't have agendas.
No, 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 no.
Yep, we don't, we don't want that, but...
Because we, we did talk to, we had, we had a, you know, pre-concept, you know, a concept pre-submital meeting with a developer recently for about 100 homes in a location not too far away from this. And three other, well, two other pretty significant commercial expansions, you know, site plan review potentials that are out there, third smaller one. So I continue to have conversations. It's just that we haven't had, and I, you know, I do welcome the chance that this is, this is a time to do the planning, you know, we don't have the full agendas with, you know, the active applications.
As we look at the zoning code, I want to know where we're going to put things like co-living, accessory structure, granny flats, those sorts of opportunities, especially for somebody of, of my age. We don't have anything in Forest Lake where co-living or those kind of accessories to a home really are, are put together.
Well, I think we've approved accessory unit dwellings, right?
So, within the single-family home there is, with a limit of 600 square feet. So it's really not attractive for most people.
But we can do them. Someone who wants to put an accessory dwelling unit on their property can do that.
And there's support for that in, in the comp plan currently.
But as, as I'm talking about the zoning code, the devil for some of those things is going to be the details.
Right.
And so I think that there will be some...
And neighbors.
Yes. And so, so as we talk about those, those are, those are some of the zoning code things that I think will take a lot of discussion. You know that bed and breakfast is something. I think that, that Forest Lake's opportunity to be a staycation fairly close to the cities with some really great park, state park, county park, trail amenities. Boy, those are the places I stay at when I, when I go out of state. We really don't have a zoning code that has that sort of a use that fits well.
Did you have anything else for us, Donovan? On other business?
The, we did, the council did pass the 2020 meeting schedule. I'll, I'll send, you know, copies of that to you, to you all, so you know what, what these second and fourth Wednesdays are, with a couple of exceptions around the holidays. And then also, I will, I will send an email requesting, you know, further input on what are your priorities for, you know, considerations for, you know, zoning code, zoning code changes.
Okay. Thank you.
So what do you think? What's your, you probably have no idea for sure when Met Council will be done with the comp plan and it can be approved. Is there any other obstacles at all before the city council, other than that, for the comp plan?
No, I mean, they, they need to make, do a formal adoption, but, and we'll, we will hold a public hearing for that. I think, I think it's just important to have that transparency. But February is the date I have my mind, you know, for adoption. And that's assuming that...
So we're, so this kind of stuff isn't going to start till March, though?
Well, yeah, and we, we need to, you know, we do have money in the budget for consulting with Bolton Mank, because I'll need that support as well. And...
That'll be real interesting.
You know, but well, I mean, you know, for the technical, technical pieces. But, you know, I don't see, I don't, there's no barriers to us starting our conversations.
And I'm assuming, since you brought up the calendar, that the second meeting, seeing that it's on Christmas Day, will not happen, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So this is the last meeting of the year. Karen, did you have anything for us?
No updates.
Councilmember Gerard?
I apologize for my hat throughout the meeting tonight. Good evening, commissioners. First, let's start with, I believe Donovan mentioned 123 parcel. For though, I assume all of you watch the city council meetings for its riveting...
Absolutely.
...education and action that happens there. But if you haven't seen last week's, or last Monday's, two days ago, there is a presentation on the 123 and the tech centers that they're, data centers that they're looking to put on there and why it's very, very favorable area for a data center. So I encourage you to, it's about a, maybe on a, not quite even 15 minutes, I think, presentation. And I can't remember the gentleman who gave the presentation. He was from CBRE, one of the largest commercial brokers in the, I believe they're now in the world, but at least the United States. And they're going to represent us on that 123 acres. One of the really highlights of it is, is that there's two power companies. So this is really favorable for data centers, because they'll have two ends for power that are not owned by the same company. Besides that, my education on that is, as well as you here in the city council minutes, I do appreciate the robust discussion tonight. As always, you know, the city council's interested in, in why we're going to allow a change in zoning potentially. So just make sure you cover that real well. And then lastly, on behalf of the council and the mayor, we want to thank you for your service this last year. This commission does very, very good work. We're very happy with the work. We take your comments very seriously, and I believe we have backed you very solidly this last year. So thank you very much, and have a wonderful and safe holiday. Can I answer anything?
Was that the, did you say CBRE was the company?
Yes. I think I got those four initials correct. Am I right, Kevin?
I believe you are.
That's correct. I used to office in their building.
I missed Monday night's ad.
Collins, whatever it is, yes. Anything else I can answer tonight?
Thank you very much for attending our meetings. I appreciate it very much to have the council here.
You know, it's, it's, it comes with the territory of being on a council, and it's really nice with this commission, because it's such a nice group, you know? Although I have to tell you, prior to this event tonight, I was at the Cable Commission's holiday party.
Oh, no.
That's all I got to say.
We would have one, but it's, we don't have that budget.
I missed the meeting on Monday. Was it finalized on the code enforcer officer still put on hold for 2020?
I have to apologize, I did not attend the meeting.
Oh, I didn't.
I'm just getting over the influenza flu, so I was, was just staying home.
It was put on hold.
Yeah.
It was put on hold.
It was put on hold.
Yes.
That's what I thought. The park and rec is moving forward?
Yes.
Parks, it's a parks slash communications position.
Communications is the only one we put in for 20, I believe. That's how it sat last, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, well, the weekend, or the Monday before, the meeting before it was put off till Monday's meeting, and I didn't make Monday's meeting, so I didn't know, I didn't hear.
They, they did. Al, the fire chief, did present the candidate for the building inspector, which we approved.
Building official.
Building official. And coming in with about 14 years' experience, a lot of emphasis on customer service.
Why did the fire chief bring him in? Is he, is he on the fire department?
No, but I believe that...
He's the boss.
He reports to, building official reports to the fire chief.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because we have, our, our, our inspectors are dual-certified.
But I was very glad to hear that they didn't saddle the, the prospective official with that. I would not have been in favor. We'd been looking from now till who knows when to get somebody, get the right person in here. So I'm very glad about that. I, I had a con, I shared, I, I rang the Salvation Army bells with the fire chief here last, a week ago Friday, or a week ago Saturday, so I had, we, we had a very robust discussion about all that stuff. So it was very, it was very interesting. I was very glad to, to be able to do that. He's a very sharp guy. Good, good guy to put in charge.
Anything else for me? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
For those of you that know Judy Hontash, she is an economic development commission. Her husband died yesterday. It was not expected.
Are there any other business from commissioners?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. Donovan, the covered shelters that you see in people's front yards where they're parking cars in them, is that, is that legal in our city? Or, you know, they're like, like big plastic domes and people are parking their cars in them in their front yards?
No, they're not.
Next to, not in the driveway, but like next to the driveways and...
No, made for specials.
Where is this? Do they need a permit for them?
Oh, they're, Donovan, they're all over. There's a couple in July, there's...
But I mean, like right off the street and stuff, in their front yard, not, not in the backyard.
No, no. I mean, it's essentially, I mean, that's not a, it's not really accessory structure, but we don't really have temporary accessory structures, except for the, you know, the canvas and pole structures. But that, no, that's not legal.
And then I noticed, you know, last year I was on vacation and the, the high school came in, I got a, a variance or a permit to put some huge, huge lettering on the side of their building out there. And I see now in the last month, there's more lettering up, or the big FL, is that, was that part of last year's variance or something? Or is that something new that they just added on this, this month, this year?
You know, I drive by that, I haven't noticed that one.
The FL's been there a while. It went up when the other lettering went up.
No, no, it just said, it said Forest Lake Area Schools, not Forest Lake High School, Forest Lake Area Schools. And that's all they had on there for, for months.
I believe on the plans, when they brought that forward, it had the FL on the...
I was not here, that's why I was asking, because it was all passed when I was on the vacation.
I could validate, but I'm almost positive it was on the rendition on that other side.
You'd be, you'd be amazed at the amount of attention that it has garnered.
It's, it looks terrible. It looks terrible.
It's probably the second, I've gotten the second most negative comments from people about the size of that lettering and wondering how on earth that fits into our, our zoning ordinance, particularly business owners who, you know, who get, you know...
Whacked.
Whacked for, you know...
And it doesn't even say Forest Lake High School.
A lot of four-sided signs and all that kind of thing. And here's this, here's this block-long sign, you know?
And it's more like advertising Forest Lake Area Schools, not Forest Lake High School. And speaking of that, they've got signs up in their front yard advertising for teachers and stuff, big, huge, like...
Bus drivers?
Well, the bus drivers, too, but they, they got teachers at the high school and at Leela, big, huge signs, you know, teachers wanted. Is that all part of our sign?
Because they're, they're not commercial entities, there are different rules for them. And it, and so it being nonprofit agencies, we don't, the sign code doesn't have specific rules.
Schools are nonprofit?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, I mean, they're, they're not a commercially property.
And then the Winix Cup, or CUP, with the, the trees he was going to plant this last spring, and I don't see anything, it's been a, over a year. He wasn't going to plant them. He came here in front of the city council, the planning commission, and he's going to put trees in after a certain date, didn't want to put them in because of the salt. It's been over a year. I don't know who enforces that, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there, because people ask me about it. And lastly, any new updates on those little mini cell towers that we discussed last year?
We actually met with Verizon yesterday.
Okay.
And so we, we, they want to apply rather soon. There are none in residential areas, and they reminded me of that, you know, because essentially what 5G will allow is basically the kind of speed for, to provide internet service, you know, wirelessly. And so they would have, you know, be a, be a competitor to our current internet, internet suppliers. So, but there's locations, basically it's, you know, Broadway and 12th, you know, where the highest, where they need the, the coverage, you know, where the, where, you know, people are using their devices most, most frequently. But these are 4G and 5G will basically double that size of the, of the appliance on, on the poles. So we, I'm not sure what their idea of construction is, but we'll be processing those administratively probably in the next couple of months, I bet.
So, so if Verizon puts it up there, can people who have like T-Mobile and Sprint and everybody else, are they allowed to use them? Or is every company going to come in and put a, a mini cell tower on top of one of our light poles? So now there's six of them on one pole and, you know, how is that going to work?
It is, no, it's with, with colocation, it's simply to one, it's basically they're renting that one pole. So there's not multiple, you know, communicate, you know, telecoms on a single structure.
Because wasn't it T-Mobile that came in and talked to us the first time? And what, I don't think it was, I didn't think it was Verizon, I thought it was T-Mobile.
Well, Zayo did put up a pole over by, you know, the Forest Lake Mini Storage, you know, John Morley's property. And Verizon did, they put one up in the Menards parking lot recently. But there, but there are not any on city property, other than, of course, the water towers.
So the mini ones are going to be individual for, like if Verizon puts them up, they're for Verizon customers only?
Correct.
Unless one of the other people rent them or whatever, you know, how that works.
Right, right. So we, I mean, we can, you know, once, and what, is there three or four providers? I mean, so they could be, you know, that, you know, four different companies putting their, their wireless facilities, you know, in public rights of way. And that's, you know, that was, that was a decision the state legislature made that, you know, allowed this by right. And we put some, you know, some conditions on it. That's, that's our, that's what serves us as a community facility, basically.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion with Sharon.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second? There's no discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to you two. Merry Christmas to you, too.
It's funny, I'm digging deep into the...
Oh?
Yeah.
I'm not in, am I?
You are.